Good evening, welcome to the regular Planning Commission meeting, Grand Blank Township. Today is, what, May 6th, I believe? Yeah? Please rise and join us in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Planning Commission members present this evening, we have our newest Planning Commission member, Mr. Bush, we have Mr. Anderson, Mr. Yoncho, Mr. Gellings, Mr. Banderski, Ms. Coulter. We also have our Planning and Zoning Director, Mr. Jeremy Smith, our Attorney, Mr. David Laddie, and our Planning Outside Consultant, Ms. Jo Bame. First item on our agenda is approval of the agenda. Any changes? Now, I do remember, Jeremy, you mentioned there's one other item that we need to add. You want to put that down towards the end, under, towards Committee Reports?
We can put that under New Business or Committee Reports, however you'd like to do it.
And that item is, Chairman?
We need a new Vice Chair.
Okay.
I'll make it Item 7B, how's that? That's the one change to the agenda as we received it. Any other changes?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the agenda as modified.
Motion by Mr. Banderski, support by Mr. Yoncho. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion passes 6-0. Approval of minutes, March 4th, 2021.
Mr. Chairman, I have reviewed the draft of the meeting minutes and found everything to be in order, and therefore I make a motion, we approve the meeting minutes of March 4th, 2021.
Motion by Mr. Banderski, support by, anyone?
Support.
Mr. Yoncho. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 6-0. Next item on our agenda is an opportunity for public comment. Now, this is for anything that we don't have a public hearing scheduled for. We tabled the Discount Tire project previously, so what we'll do is we'll continue that public hearing, and there'll be an opportunity if you want to address the Planning Commission on that, as soon as we get to that, which is going to be very soon. But if you're here and want to address the Planning Commission on anything else, now would be the time. It doesn't look like it, so we'll close the public comment. Next item would normally be correspondents. We didn't have, we didn't have anything there. So we quickly get to Old Business, which is the special land use and final site plan review for Discount Tire, which was tabled for our March 4th meeting. So, is there anything you want to give us a brief overview of what we might be looking at that's different tonight than what we'd previously seen? Introduce yourself, please.
Yep, well, good evening. My name's Ryan McEnhill with ENG. Also with me tonight is Roger Marrow with Discount Tire.
Excuse me, would you please state your address?
16930 Robbins Road, Grand Haven, Michigan. So just some of the events that have taken place since the March meeting. As most of you are probably aware, we did receive the variance from the Zoning Board of Appeals for our separation distance from the residential to our principal structure at that March meeting, and also at the ZBA meeting, we were able to get property owner feedback, and I see that there are property owners here this evening that can provide additional feedback to this board. And then we've addressed some of the comments that were raised from that March Planning Commission meeting that I'll go through as well. So I think the biggest things, we did add the six-foot-high masonry screen wall along the eastern side of the property, adjacent to the residential district. We also placed a three-foot-high knee wall along the southern side of the property. Those will all be 12-inch CMU structures with a top cap. And then we also shifted the loading zone. We did have it towards the northeast corner, adjacent to the dumpster enclosure. We have since moved that up closer to where the coiling door is on the northeast side, and that way, you know, they can do their loading and unloading in a much, I guess, more efficient manner and not obstruct any circulation around the site. We've kept that area that was previously the loading, loading zone as a dead area, so there's still be maneuverability to get around that. We have provided a pollution incident prevention plan. That was one of the things that was requested. Again, Discount Tire doesn't have any hazardous substances stored on-site, but they do have a guide that is in all their stores that basically gives them instructions on how to deal with such a problem. So that was something that was provided to staff as well. As far as the agency approvals go, I did want to update that we have received the driveway permit on Saginaw Street from the Genesee County Road Commission. I know that was one of the things that we'll talk about as well with the driveway spacing, but I did want to point out that they did approve that permit as well. And then our intention, assuming everything goes well here tonight, is to be at the City of Grand Blank Planning Commission on May 17th. So that's where we're at with the agency approvals. One of the other things that was brought up at the previous Planning Commission was the bay door orientation, and I think, you know, the way the ordinance reads is that these overhead doors are not supposed to, to face a residential district or face a roadway upon a determination that there's no reasonable alternative and the poor visual impacts are diminished, that can be waived by this group. And I guess I would say, you know, when we think about maybe why that criteria is in the zoning ordinance, I think you would probably envision, you know, like a bell tire or a toughy that has 10 overhead bay doors, you know, that face a residential district or face a roadway. What we have with this design is nothing even close to that. We're talking about one bay door facing the southern direction, one bay door facing the northern direction, both of which are completely screened to the residential district. The reason that we, and we went through a whole different scenarios of how we could position this building, and ultimately came to that this was the best choice based on, we're also dealing with a jurisdictional line where the township and the county line goes through the site. And obviously, we didn't, we couldn't have a building location that would cross that line. It had to be completely in one or the other, and just where it lies, we had to be completely within the township. So that's one of the reasons that drove where these overhead bay doors needed to be. And like I said, the poor visual impact, again, when you look at something with, with a lot of bay doors, I can see the need for that, but this, this is a visual impact improvement, I guess I would say, in my opinion. So, that's one thing that I did want to point out. The site acoustics and the, and the noise abatement, like I said, we have taken proactive measures with, with this building and how it's laid out, everything done inside the building itself. The overhead doors are completely shielded to the residential properties. And we did make some updates that was in your packet, and we just made minor updates, and I think they're highlighted in yellow in each of your packets, basically just to point out that this is a site-specific noise study that was done. The measurements that were taken were done with the bay doors open and with it operating at full capacity. When this-
They were taking at a building that was the same configuration as this one, is that correct?
Correct. Yep. And then they were actually onsite here in Grand Blank Township, judging that, or getting measurements on the ambient noise levels that they saw as well. So that, I wanted to point that out as well. And then the study doesn't take into account all the proactive measures that we're taking to mitigate that noise, so it doesn't take into account the six-foot-high noise wall, it doesn't take into account the dense landscaping that we're adding, or the mature deciduous trees that are going to stay in place. So, those types of things aren't taken into account, but we're also going to mitigate noise in a pretty significant fashion as well. I guess the conclusions from that noise study, and I know that you guys have all had a chance to review it, review it, was basically that the potential noise level that this site is going to produce is less than the average ambient noise level. When you think about what the ambient noise levels are, you think about a five-lane roadway, Saginaw Street, that's right there. You have the railroad tracks that are nearby that see three trains a day. So it's pretty significant ambient noise already at that location. So that was just one thing that I wanted to point out. Based on some conversations with, with staff, we did look at a specialty-type wall that uses materials that we thought may better mitigate noise. And basically what those specialty materials do is, you know, the masonry walls, I guess, that you see on MDOT projects, on highways, those walls are intended to, they don't absorb all the noise, they tend to deflect them back. What these specialty walls do is they're just better at absorbing all of that noise. And in our particular case, what we thought was, well, that's not really going to be more of a benefit to the residential district, it's just going to push more noise, I guess, back to the Discount Tire site, and whether or not there was a, I guess, a benefit to using those specialty materials, given it probably wasn't going to provide any additional benefit to the residential properties. With that being said, if that's something that the Planning Commission would like to see, I think we would incorporate that. We just, you know, we want to make a site that everybody's happy with, so I just wanted to, to point that out as well. And then the last thing, and I included in our packet the ZBA supplemental that we submitted for the variance, and I just wanted to point out that, you know, in our opinion, we're proposing a site that's going to better mitigate noise than any of the permitted uses that are allowed in this district. When you look at a retail establishment up to 60,000 feet, such as a Dollar General, Aldi, that produces just a bunch of garbage in general, that was one of the things that the property owners were concerned about, that already happens. Is that a better use than, than what we're proposing here? A restaurant like Applebee's, or a BW3, or something like that, that's open really late, that's going to produce noise, is that a better use than, than what we're proposing here? Because that's a principal permitted use, and then you have banquet halls, fraternal halls, dance halls, all those things that hotels, motels, people coming and going at all hours, is that a better use than what we're proposing here today? And I don't think that is from, from a garbage standpoint, from a noise standpoint. I just wanted to point that out for the members as well. So getting into the screening and landscaping, I already talked about that we, we are proposing the walls around the perimeter of the site. So the six-foot-high wall, our parking lot is actually going to be raised up at, at an elevation of 829. The yard of the residential property adjacent is at 825, so we're, again, providing a six-foot-high wall. There's going to be 10, the top of that wall is going to be 10 feet higher than the yard elevation of that adjacent residential property. So there's a significant height there that's providing a buffer to that residential property. And then, we also talked about this at ZBA, there's going to be a dense layer of spruces and, and pines behind that wall, on the residential side of the wall, basically, so they're not just staring at the wall, they're staring at nice landscaping. And then I also included a picture of those existing deciduous trees that are tall, provide a nice canopy, obviously when they're fully leafed in the summer, they're not even going to see the building. So that was one thing that I think the property owners were happy about when, when we explained that. So that's one other thing. Already touched on, on the variance, and I think, you know, Mr. Bush was actually one of the members on that ZBA committee, but in our opinion, I think that one of the reasons that that variance got passed is this building design, obviously, everything being done inside the building is completely different than any service-type use that you're going to see. Certainly not set up like a bell tire, certainly not set up like a toughies. In our opinion, it's, it's a service store. If you didn't have tires being shown in the, in the showroom, and you just pass that store, you're not even thinking of a tire store. It's just, it doesn't look that way. We just feel like we're compatible, I guess, with the commercial use and the uses that are adjacent to us, all of them an automotive-type use, so we feel like we are in harmony, I guess, with that district. And then, just one thing I wanted to point out is that, you know, Discount Tire takes pride in having a clean site, being a good neighbor. I think that they're a benefit to the community, and they do take pride in that, and I just wanted to, to point that out as well. And then, I'm going to, almost done, I want to get to the driveway spacing waiver, because that was one of the things that, if this body didn't grant a waiver for that driveway spacing, which it has to be 325 feet of separation between driveways at our 45 miles per hour design speed on Saginaw Street, if that waiver isn't, isn't granted here, we would have to go back to, to ZBA to get that. And I just wanted to point out that we are only proposing a right-in, right-out driveway. Obviously, the right-turn movements are the most, are the safest movements out there. I think, you know, the concern if we were to put in just a normal access driveway is, now you got two left turns in close proximity with, you know, this driveway and Case Avenue. And I think with what we're proposing is, you're now still limiting all those left turns to Case Avenue, but we're proposing a much safer right-in, right-out, where from a safety standpoint, those are generally considered pretty safe. And we're talking about low trip generation, 75 to 100 vehicles a day, so, so not something that you're going to see, a lot of trip generation. Bell Tire down the road has a full access driveway on Saginaw Street, not within those, those 325-foot limits. They also have a secondary access onto an adjacent residential district. Autozone within a baseball throw of Discount Tire has, has a right-in, also has a full driveway to a secondary roadway as well. So there is some precedence there, so just wanted to, to point that out as well. So, anyway, I just, I appreciate your time, I wanted to get through all that, just, I know you, a lot of you have already heard some of that information, but just wanted to, to get it out there again, so it's refreshing everybody's memory, so appreciate your time.
Do you, any Planning Commission members have questions for our applicant before we go to our consultant?
Mr. Chairman, I just have one question. Can you describe the wall, proposed wall, in a little more detail? I mean, you said masonry, that mean brick, or some other type of masonry? Do you have any pictures, or, trying to get a little bit more into the wall?
You know what, I did send a picture to staff of one that we did in Clinton Township. It's a, it's a 12-inch CMU wall. I think, I don't know, Jeremy, if you want to maybe give comment from an independent standpoint on what you thought of that photo that we provided, but-
On your drawing nine, you are indicating a split-face-
Yep.
-masonry wall with a, I believe it's a pre-capped, pre-capped.
Yep.
Height is six feet.
And that's the one that was done in Clinton Township as well.
Anything else you want to see, or?
I'm sorry, okay.
Anything else you want to see regarding the wall, or?
Uh, no, I was just wondering if it was like standard brick wall or something, but I remember-
It's, it's more aesthetic than, than just a-
More texture, the split-face.
Yes, yep.
A bit more texture than the block wall, but it'd be, is that an integral color by any chance, or?
We try to get it as close to the building color as we can, so they kind of mesh together well.
You have an integral color?
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, just while you're on the wall, is the texture on both sides?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, and I, oh, one follow-up. As I understand it, all of the landscaping, the existing trees as well as the proposed trees are going to be on the residential side of the wall?
Correct.
All right, I think you can have a seat and rest.
Thank you.
We'll have Ms. Bame, can you kind of go through if there's anything you wanted to highlight from your research?
Sure. Thank you, it's nice to see everybody tonight, and it's nice to see you all in person, too, which is a nice change of pace. So, I think that Ryan did a great job of going over the concerns that we had had previously. I think in terms of the wall, and we've talked about that, with the evergreens on the outside, the residence side, and the ability to hopefully buffer some of the sound from that, really, I think our only outstanding comment would be pertaining to the driveway spacing, and we did have our traffic engineer look at that. He did find that the design of the driveway with the intentional force, kind of the forced turning design there, will be sufficient with appropriate signage to indicate right turns only, and we can look at that after they're in place.
Jeremy, did you have anything from your standpoint?
Nope.
All right, I think what we'll do is we'll go to the public and get any comments. Anyone who would like to make? Step up to the microphone and give us your name and address, please.
My name is Virginia Wright, I live at 6254 South Case Avenue, which is, goes right alongside their, I guess, east, I'm the neighbor anyway. So I have a few concerns and kind of expectations from this board. And the first, I'd like to ask, I don't know if the berm goes all the way across, my, my yard is 164.85 feet, and I would like to know that the berm is going to go all the way across where my property is. The berm, because right now, the, the top berm, there's like a berm, and then there's this flat area, okay? And the last time they changed hands, they told me that they could not extend that berm because they were not changing the makeup of whatever they were putting in there. So I just want to make sure that this berm is going to go all the way across my property because I'm in my backyard, my patio's back there, and so it's kind of, it would be kind of beneficial to us if it was all the same level, okay?
Are you the property owner that's directly adjacent to them?
Yes. Am I, I, I'm no good at directions, I'm in back of them from Saginaw Street, so that's where I am. Okay, so, and then the wall, I want to be assured that this is going to be a wall that is a noise barrier product, not just a little old masonry wall. I would like it to have to be a noise barrier wall, which is a little different than just a, a brick wall. It's a noise observant, observant, whatever they call that, wall. And I have, I just got online and did two little companies that do these kinds of things, if you want, if you want to look at it, I have them right here, so. I'm asking for a sound-absorbent wall to be put up across my whole property. The next thing I would like to see is, of course, the lights. I would like to make sure that the lights, you know, because lights from parking lots are very tall, and if they're like 25 feet tall, that light is going to be shining, and it'll be shining right into my living room window and on my patios, and I would like to have those lights, maybe they could put them in the back of their property by the wall, to shine out towards Saginaw Street, which would lighten up their whole parking lot, but not my living room. So I, I'd like to see that. And, let me see, what else? And then, one last thing would be that the shrubs and the trees are very nice, you know, and I'm happy to have them, but they're not going to quiet any noise. You can hear wind blow through in trees and shrubs. It is not going to stop any kind of noise, a tree, and I'm sure you can have, almost have to agree with me, it is not going to stop any, you know, constant, like that, of those air hammers, okay? So, I would like to make sure that the wall is noise-absorbent. And then the last thing is, with the trees and the shrubs, they'll be really pretty and everything, and I understand by the, the plans and everything that they'll, they'll be put in, and they'll have a nice years guaranteed to grow and be pretty and everything. Well, I would like to know how that's going to be taken care of after one year. What if one of those trees gets dud, or, or something gets unruly? I mean, I don't mind, my own self, I can, my yard, I take care of my own yard, I could trim the bushes and everything, but I would like to know how that area is going to be maintained from here until forever. And so, in closing, I believe that if a nonconforming entity wants to squeeze themselves into an area like this, that they should be willing to, you know, help us out. Thank you.
Your comments, I think what we're going to do is we're going to collect all the comments from the public, and then we'll make sure they all get addressed at the end.
Okay.
Anyone else would like to address the Planning Commission?
Yes, I'm her husband, Kenneth Wright, 6254 Case Avenue. Okay, I like their building, it's, like I said the last time, it's very good painting, it looks very nice. Whether it stays like that or not, I don't know. But, and I buy their little argument that this could be better-looking, or better than a Dollar General, or whatever. However, I think the Dollar General would not be quite as noisy. The problem with the noise argument is, is the ambient noise, is it's not a constant noise. This, 60 cars to 100 cars a day in there, and doors are open, you want to hear that air wrench, how many times? You know, if they're getting a complete set of tires, that's four times 60, 240 times they got to take the tires off, put them back on. So it's 480 times. If it's up to 100, you know the calculation. That's my principal concern, and on the plans that I reviewed, it didn't look like the fence was going all the way across the property on our side. It was going to end before, before you guys get to your property line. I'd like to make sure it goes clear across, if they're going to put up a wall there, that the wall goes completely across the east side of the property. So it would be part of my neighbors, as well as all of ours. My other question, my other concern is traffic onto Case Avenue, it's bad enough now, and it's hard to get out of Case Avenue at a lot of times. Then their dumpster, they got their location of their dumpster in the northeast corner of the property. of the property. They have a dumpster on that property now, and of course, there's no wall up there now, but when they come and empty that dumpster at 5:00 in the morning, it shakes us out of bed. It's a loud noise. There's another one across the street on Case Avenue from them. We can hear that every time they come to pick up the trash. I think a better place for this dumpster is on the northwest corner, where they come in on that radius, there's a little gap there, I don't see why that couldn't be placed in there, and surrounded with a, with their wall or their enclosure. If they can keep the noise down, either with a sound absorbent wall, or whatever wall they're proposing, and meet my other concerns, and my wife's concerns, I'm all for the store going in there. I think it probably is better than some, some other choices that we could have, but I would like those issues addressed. And, that's it. Oh, the other thing is, have we got a revised site plan that I could look at? I haven't seen a revised site plan. The site plan we have gotten is not the way the building's going to be at present, or if...
Do you have one available?
I've got a small version.
Yeah, see, I've got an eight by 11, it's hard to read.
Okay, I'd like to see that, because I have no idea.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Anyone else who would like to address the planning commission?
My name is George Rizik, R-I-Z-I-K, 9400 South Saginaw Street, Suite E, Grand Blank, Michigan. I'm a local attorney, and I represent Jerry Adwin, who's the current owner of the property. The property's under a purchase agreement, of course, with contingencies to the applicant. There's only two areas I want to address, and one has to do with the reaction, or sort of a lack of reaction at the ZBA. Other than Mr. Bush at the ZBA, they seemed, they didn't seem to visualize how the door system worked on the building. I've, I've got some overheads, and you may already, you may know this, but I just wanted to point that out.
The bottom of the drawing is Saginaw Street. Cars come, generally, they're going to be coming in the north side through the doors, coming out the south side. To the right of the picture is Case. So, you're coming through the building, the cars are pulling back into the bays, and there's, you're not going to see the cars when they're being worked on, from any side of the building, unless one of those garage doors is open, you'll see them from that area where the garage door is open, totally on the other side of the building from the residential area. So, the traffic flow is like this, and all the work will be done in the building. So, you don't just have one wall, you have essentially two walls between the work and the residential areas. The back wall of the building, which is totally separated from the work area by about 30 feet of tire storage inside, the tire racks inside. And then you have another wall, which is the CMU wall, that's going to be on the, along the back edge of the property. So, the noise is separated by two walls, not by one. There are no doors in the back except the one coil door at the northeast corner, which is for collecting the used tires, and then the small entry door at the back, fire escape door, at the back of the building, a regular entrance door like this right over here. So, there's no walls back there, and those doors aren't going to be open for anything. If a person wants to go out the door, they go out and they close it. If they're going to collect tires in that back area, they'll open the coil door, collect the tires, and close it. It's not going to be open. Reason it's not going to be open is, usually when you go to Bell Tire, the reason those guys see those doors open is it's hot in the summer. These doors, where their location is, provides no ventilation at all. The next set of drawings you've seen, I guess, not on there, but you've seen these drawings.
Yeah, we have those in our package.
Okay, and those show what you're going to see from all four sides, and the one on the bottom is the Saginaw Street visual, which shows that you're not going to see anything from Saginaw Street. The one at the, in the middle, I'm sorry, the, yeah, the one in the middle is the visual from the residence. You're not going to see any vehicles, you're not going to see any work being done, there's not going to be any exposure to the work. The other issue that I wanted to address was whether or not this sort of belongs in this area. And what I did was I just, I think it kind of jumps into your, your mind, what else is going on in the area? Serra is going on. Serra has 12 car dealerships. Now, this is excluding the Honda dealership, which is in the city, and excluding the used cars at the far north, the large used car area, just the new car area and the bump and paint shop. There's 12 dealerships, very intense auto repairs, bodywork, paint, frame stretching, all kinds of bump work, engines rebuilt plus regular mechanical work. Inside the buildings at Serra, and I was surprised to see this, 155,000 square feet. How much of that is garage and service? 110,000 square feet, on 33 and a half acres. Let's compare that to this particular site. The building will be 9,280 square feet, including the mezzanine, I believe. It's going to be five service bays in the entire building, as you see on the drawing. It's for tires only, there's no heavy mechanical going on here. Total of 1.2 acres, as opposed to 33 and a half acres, and half of that, almost half of it is in the city. The entire building is located on the Grand Blank Township area. There's an angle that cuts off at the corner that puts it in the city. So, what, six to eight tenths of an acre of affected property in the township. At Serra, the service bay doors are usually open, and usually on the back of the, back and on the side facing the residential areas, these, I've shown you what the doors are like. We don't have any bay doors, we, it's not like Bell Tire, just up the street, where they have, I believe the doors are glass, and you can see, and seeing the work being done, and there's, you know, half a dozen or 10 of them there. You drive in, you back out, you drive in, you back out. This, you drive in and you drive out, so that you can't see anything. So, I just wanted to compare that and show you what's in the area, to show you why this kind of makes sense in this area, or why, maybe that's too strong a term, maybe it's compatible with that, what else is in the area, and maybe, you might even say it's not compatible because it's not intense enough to be similar to Serra. Thank you.
Anyone else who would like to address the planning commission?
But what the gentleman just was saying is true, there's Al Serra, there's Bell Tire, there's all these other places, but they do not back up to anybody's house, anybody's property. As you can, you know, if you go down Saginaw Street, Bell Tire, there's no houses around there, there's, you know, that, that other store on the corner of Saginaw Door, there's no houses over there. And on all of the Al Serra places, there's really no houses per se, you know, they're on Frederick Street, but they do not go towards, you know, their, their garage doors do not open up to anybody's property. So, I just want to point that out. Thank you very much.
Anyone else who would like to address the planning commission? If not, I think we'll close the public hearing portion. I would like to offer the applicant an opportunity, if there's any of these, these items, extent of the wall along the rear of the property was one item that was...
Yeah, I have them all listed out here, so I can go, I can go through those one by one. Yeah, so right now, we show the wall, I don't know if we have it coming all the way up to the right-of-way line of Case Avenue, but we can certainly extend it that far. And then, we just chose to stop it on the north side because, right at where the dumpster enclosure is, because that automatically provides another wall already at that six-foot height.
What I see on the drawing, the wall does go to the right-of-way line for Case Avenue.
Okay.
The maximum distance that the ordinance commits, my understanding, is that correct, Ms. Bame, or Mr.?
I missed the last part of what you said.
The masonry wall, as it approaches Case Avenue, stops at the right-of-way line, and that is the maximum distance that they can extend it out.
Right, they can't go into the right-of-way, that's correct.
What you're saying is that on the other end, it stops where it hits the dumpster, so the dumpster has a six-foot high wall.
Correct.
Does it make any sense to just tie those together?
Well, we have to, we have to put our wall in a location where, because it's budding, it's coming up to where we have parking spaces, so we need to allow for some car overhang. But, I mean, if you want us to extend it past the dumpster enclosure, if you think that has merit, I mean, we can do that if you'd like us to.
You're going to have, there's no sense having a six-foot wall, a foot or two away from a six-foot wall, because you're just going to have trash in there.
Yeah. The other one that was presented was the specialty materials that I think I, I went through pretty well in my initial presentation. Like I said, they're meant, the walls that you see on MDOT projects are all these masonry walls. The only benefit to these specialty materials, again, is that they don't send that sound back to where it came from. The specialty materials just absorb that sound. So, the residential properties aren't going to see a difference one way or the other. That being said, if the planning commission members think that has merit, I think at this point where we can, we can go that route, you know, we want to be at this location. The other one was the shielded lighting, and that did come up at the ZBA, and Jeremy and I talked about that. That's something we can absolutely do. We do have, the light poles that are at, adjacent to the residential district are shorter in height, I think they're 15 feet, as opposed to the higher ones that are in other places. And then we can just shield that so that, you know, if the resident were looking out the back of the residence, that they weren't looking at a light, it would be shielded, and that's something that we can certainly provide as well. She had mentioned a comment about, you know, if one of the trees got damaged, or, or something in that regard, you know, I guess, you know, I don't know if, if you'd look into them. Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, can I?
Absolutely.
That would definitely be handled by my office and with code enforcement. With, with the site plan as presented, they have to maintain that level of maturity in the trees and the amount of trees that they're presenting here. So, if something dies, they'll come to my office and code enforcement will be involved, and if they don't get replaced, then we have violation notices and civil infraction tickets to combat that.
Thank you.
There was another comment regarding the Case Avenue traffic, and I think, you know, that comment really speaks to how that driveway on Saginaw Street has some merit. I mean, if they're worried about all this traffic that they're seeing on Case Avenue, you know, if you weren't going to allow that, that, that right in, right out to be there, you're, again, forcing more traffic out onto Case Avenue. So, I think that comment really speaks to the merit of having that driveway in that location. The dumpster location, again, I mean, if that's something that, that the township planning commission members and staff wanted in a different location, that, that's fine with us.
Maybe I'll refer that one to either Jeremy or Ms. Bame. I believe our ordinance requires it to be in the rear yard. We don't allow the dumpsters to be in the front yard.
Yes, in the rear yard or non-required side yard, unless otherwise approved by the planning commission.
Yeah, you're not going to allow, you're not going to, we're not going to want it in the front yard, I guess.
And then, again, there was a comment about the air wrenches. One of the things that Roger mentioned is that all their air wrenches are now muffled. I don't know if you want to speak to that in any...
I'm Roger Merrill with Discount Tire, address is 3786 Delano Drive, Eaton Rapids, Michigan. And we, we switched to all of our air wrenches in every single one of our stores about, probably two months ago. They're muffled, and they're probably, I'd say a third less noise than what the old unmuffled ones are. And we, we did that just across the country. If we make a change, we change everything. So, that's been changed. I, I could get you decimals if you need that, but I don't know that off the top of my head.
I, I can speak to that, because my office is adjacent to a shop where I work, and I used to hear them all the time, and now, literally behind your rear wheel, I can't even hear them, I don't know who those guys are working with.
Good to hear.
And then, just, just the last comment came up about the Bell Tire and the Serra. I think I gave you an exhibit that showed the proximity of their principal buildings to the R3 district, so they are adjacent to residential on a lot of those. And that was in, if it wasn't in your packet this last time, it was in the March packet. So, I think that was all of the comments.
Thank you. Planning commission members, a couple of things it sounds like we need to address is driveway separation waiver, as well as probably the masonry wall, whether we're okay with the masonry wall, whether that should be some other non-observant. Anyone that wants to make a comment regarding that, either of those items? Mr. Bush?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wrote down several items after hearing, hearing from the applicant and also from the residents who live next door. One I wrote down, soundproofing. I heard the applicant say they're willing to do that. I heard the residents say they want that, so I don't see that as a problem that we have that added. My only concern with that is that both sides of the masonry wall being split base, that's probably going to mean that the Bell Tire, or not Bell Tire, the Discount Tire side's going to be flush, and then this material added to it, I'm guessing, I don't know if you can, I don't know what that material is, and I'm sure there's different, different materials, so that will have to be addressed, too, because that would change one side of the wall. I can continue with my other comments.
Sure. Go.
My second comment was the shielding of the lights. I'd like to see the shorter lights, like the applicant said, with the shielding, however, once it's done, once it's in operation, I would like to see Discount Tire specifically work with the neighbors at night, so it will be definitely taken care of to their satisfaction. Third, reading through all the information, I think I mentioned this at the BZA, there was a note in the packet that said there would be no cars parked in the parking lot during the evening, and I'd like to see that as a stipulation if this goes through.
Any comments from the applicant on what you've heard?
Yes, we actually do not have cars parked overnight in our yard. If by chance customers have to leave them overnight, we pull them inside because we're worried about the security of our customers' cars. Now, if somebody drops, you know, if they come drop a car off at 5:00 in the morning on the way to work, and, you know, leave us the keys, we don't really have, I mean, that, that might, that could happen, but, but as far as just leaving cars out there, no.
If I remember correctly, we had a comment or a note added to the drawings about no cars being parked overnight, is that correct?
Yeah.
I think that's already on the site plan.
I'll speak to it, to this while the night...
Mr. Anderson?
I tried to think of every reason I could not do this, because I'm aware of this, the higher score we proposed by the patient, and I've also learned from prior experience with the township and zoning stuff, we got to be careful what you wish for, because the next one could be a Dollar General, or it could be a 24/7 diner, whatever. So, I'll leave that aside. I think the applicant's done a really, really good job at taking care of all the concerns that the older zoning board planning commission and the neighbors have had. They've made every reason... They've made every reasonable request we can make. As far as the wall goes, I think I'm satisfied with the current plan of the wall for two reasons. One is, it is gonna deflect the sound back towards their own building. You could put a sound-absorbent wall in there, but realistically, rather it's a brick wall that's flat on this side, it's gonna be reflected back towards that, not to the residents behind. And I, for aesthetics, I like the idea of having a brick wall that kind of matches the texture and the style of the building that can be painted and maintained, like the buildings. You don't have any serious contrast, I guess you could say, between the wall, which is relatively close to the building, and it'll blend better. The entrance off Saginaw Street and the side street are sufficient. People are gonna turn left out of that light turn only. It's gonna happen, but that's something any of us can avoid, it's drivers. I think I'm okay with the plan as presented.
Any other planning commissioners have comments?
No, my concerns have been addressed.
Ms. Coulter?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Yacho?
Yes, I had a number of concerns earlier when this plan was presented, and I think most of those concerns, or all of those concerns, have actually been addressed to the best that they can be addressed. And I think that I'd like to thank the applicant for hearing those concerns and acting on them.
Thank you, Mr. Yacho. I guess I've got a question for Mr. Letty. In addressing this, do we approach the special land use in the site plan separately, or even Mr. Smith?
I think, would you prefer separate? Please.
Yeah.
Which would you like first?
Site plan. Special land use, I'm sorry.
Based on that, some of the items that we've discussed sound like they're site plan-related, and some of the others are probably special land use. Are we just, any of the comments that we've heard that should be attached to the special land use?
Ms. Bame is actually recommending that we do site plan first, so we can do it that way. Would you like to have all those conditions put on site?
I think that makes it easier, because then you can include your comments in the conditions onto the site plan, and then special land use requires a site plan. So if it's approved, then you can approve the special land use.
Site plan approval is contingent upon obtaining special land use.
Which, yeah, I mean, yes, you could do it that way, but the special land use, you can't approve the special land use unless it has a site plan, so technically. I mean, you're doing them all together, but...
So some of the items that I heard that we probably need to address in the motion is driveway separation waiver, if that's acceptable to the planning commission. The lights should be shielded. I don't know that that's identified on the site plan currently. The noise barrier slash CMU wall at the rear, what your thoughts are on that? Is there anything from the, I guess, conditions from Giffords Webster's letter from April 30th that need to be identified, or should that just be referenced?
I don't think we had anything that you haven't covered already.
Okay. So, anyone would like to make a motion?
This is for the special land use?
Sounds like we're gonna make it for the site plan. We do the site plan first.
Okay, and then you have the list of stipulations?
Well, the driveway separation waiver, whether you're okay with that? That we're waiving the required distance. I think in your motion, you would need to say whether you're okay with the CMU wall across the rear of the property, because my understanding right now, we have a CMU wall, we have landscape materials, and we have the existing trees that obviously don't have much down low, but, and the lights being shielded, that's the notes that I've got. Anything else?
Mr. Chairman, do you want to include having that wall go behind the dumpster as well? Or is that, I guess that was...
I personally, I mean, whoever's making the motion can address that, but I personally not have that little tiny space filled with trash in there.
I guess I'll make that motion, pending that the request with the shield of lighting is included, and the, the landscape barrier and sound wall off the coast tonight is included. Could both be natural landscape, the trees and the...
But you're not, but you're not asking for the sound-absorbent material?
No, the rest of the wall as they presented tonight, and the driveway as well.
Okay. We have a motion by Mr. Anderson. Is there support for that motion?
Support.
Or by Mr. Yacho. Any further discussion? Mr. Bush?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess to David, to our attorney, if this goes through, we have a sound study, and we have decimal, there's actually numbers or decimals, what the sound's gonna be at any time during the day. What kind of ramifications are there, say, if this gets built and we test it, and it's, we find it's different from what the papers say?
Well, so in that study, there was reference both the city and the township's noise ordinances. And if we find that those, that the noise that's generated from the site exceeds what's allowed in our ordinance, then we have the ability to enforce that. And in addition to enforcing that, we would be able to do that, probably, I'm trying to remember if we designated the sound ordinance to be, or the noise ordinance to be municipal civil infraction, but we would be able to most likely get injunctive relief to not only punish a violation, but also to compel a solution.
Any other discussion before we vote? All right, we'll do an individual roll call. I'm gonna start with Ms. Coulter on my right.
I'm fine with the...
So your vote is yes?
Yes.
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 No.
And Mr. Gelling's also votes yes, so motion passes 5-1. That is for approval of the site plan, so now we need a vote on the special land use to allow this Discount Tire use, I guess, here. Anyone want to make a motion regarding that?
I'll make a motion to approve the special land use.
Mr. Banderski has made a motion to approve the special land use number 20005. Is there support for that?
Support.
Support by Mr. Anderson. All right, again, we'll go through Ms. Coulter.
Actually, I have a question before we vote. Do we have to specifically cite that we are approving the waiver for the proposed driveway not meeting the 325-foot spacing requirement, or did we already?
We did that with the...
With the site plan?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, I'll vote yes.
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 Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Bush? Mr. Gelling's also votes yes. That's 6-0. That passes. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for all your efforts. Next item on our agenda would be new business. Thank you, Row. Just allow you a minute to... Lock your stuff.
Ryan, when you get the approval from the city, can you send me a copy, please?
Yeah.
Thank you.
So first item under new business is zoning case 661. I guess we're gonna have a little bit of an introduction to that, and then the idea is to set a public hearing for that zoning case. Is there anyone that's gonna address, bring, kind of give us an overview?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm gonna set my computer up, so just give me one quick second. All right, I'm plugged in. Ah-ha, great. My name is Emily Engelhardt. I'm with Redwood Apartment Neighborhoods. Address 30100 Telegraph Road, Suite 366, Bingham Farms, Michigan, 48025. I'm here tonight just as an introduction to a rezoning request that we are making for property in the township, and I just wanted to do a quick overview of ourselves as the applicant, Redwood Apartment Neighborhoods. I know some of you may be familiar with our company, as we do have an existing neighborhood in the township, and we have, but I wanted to go over our introduction, just in case you're not aware, and if anything's changed. So, who is Redwood? We are a company that does one thing and one thing only, which is build single-story, low-density, two-bedroom, two-bathroom apartment neighborhoods, each of which, who have an attached two-car garage. We have 13,000 units now throughout all the states that we're operating in, and we've been in business since 1991. Portfolio-wide, that 13,000 units, we find ourselves, obviously, fluctuates, but around 98% leased. We offer 24/7 onsite management, maintenance, and we are vertically integrated, which means we do our entitlements, we build, we own and manage our neighborhoods. We're not looking to flip these or anything. We're owned to build and create these neighborhoods. Who are our residents? Again, we're not an age-restricted product, and we rent to anyone who qualifies, but we find that many of our residents are empty nesters or seniors who are seeking a different type of housing than a single-family residence or an assisted-living-type place. We also find that we have a lot of young professionals near a hospital, like Ascension. We might get a lot of residents or nurses, folks who are looking for a $1,600 to $2,100 range in rent and would like a maintenance-free lifestyle. We take care of the snow, landscaping, things like that. You know, if you have a package that's too heavy to carry in, people on staff can help with that. Currently, we find that residents who live in our neighborhoods are already living here. They come from within three to five miles typically of an existing site, so they're looking for a different type of housing opportunity. And also, we find that we allow for some housing filtration, so that, you know, if a senior or someone wants to leave their single-family home, you know, young families can move in, things like that. We require background checks and credit checks to rent, which I'll go into a little bit later. And I was just at our Grand Lake Township site on Tuesday and talked to the leasing staff there, and it's 100% leased, and they have a 19-person waiting list right now. So we're doing very well in the township. This is just who are renters and how we look at our applications. We do a very vigorous background check, credit checks, look for, you know, felonies, civil judgments, things like that, and, you know, you have to meet our requirements to rent with us in terms. So we do try to create a safe, peace, and quiet neighborhood. We take pride in offering peace and quiet. Just a quick overview, Redwood in Michigan, we have 23 existing neighborhoods throughout the state, as you can kind of see, and we're looking, growing significantly. We found ourselves to be very successful in Michigan and in the Midwest in particular, just due to the nature of having your own private garage and driveway, as well as the single-story floor plan. We really fill a niche that a lot of communities are looking for, the missing-middle-type housing. Our nearest neighborhood is in Grand Blank. We also have a couple around in Commerce Township, White Lake, Orion, Rochester Hills, you can probably see on the map. And then just as an overview, you know, we are, we have over 105 neighborhoods, and we've owned and operated all of those since we were founded in 1991. We're not looking to flip these, as I had mentioned, and we're currently working in 10 states, as you can see on the map. Just a little bit about what we look at when we come to a site. We look at all sorts of different demographics to make sure that, you know, our rents can be supported. We look at the age of homes, proximity to our other neighborhoods, their success, other competition, proximity to retail amenities, things like that. So that's something that we would have considered before coming back here to Grand Blank. What do we build? As I had mentioned, all of our apartment homes are two-bedrooms, two-bathrooms. They each have an attached two-car garage. They're all single-story, no one above you or below. We do landscaping, stone and siding, mixture of materials. We have several different facades and floor plans within them, so that as you're driving down the street, there's a little bit of a different look to the different units. All of them have a personal outdoor patio or a screened-in porch, but a personal outdoor space, eating kitchens, pantry. We offer private streets and high-service, low-maintenance lifestyle. Here's a couple renderings of some of the different facades, as you would see driving down the road. Again, we do have a project within Grand Blank, and the one on the bottom right, I don't believe there are any of those units at that existing project, but that's our Haydenwood unit, which we often use facing the street, so that it's a softer facade. It's kind of a front porch feel rather than the garage facing. So, you know, that's what we would look at to use towards the front of our developments. Interior features, all of our units are around 1,200, or 1,290, I think, so 1,300 to 1,620 square feet. They all have full baths, a den. The bedrooms are typically separated, granite countertops, walk-in closets, things like I mentioned, washer-dryer hookups. Basically, we want to give the feeling of living in a home. We don't want anyone to have to sacrifice the feeling of living in a home if they choose to rent for whatever reason. Just some pictures. This is some photos taken in a Grand Rapids project that we have of some of the interiors of our units in the open-floor plan, kitchen, bedroom, bathrooms. This is the proposed site that we're looking at. It's on the south side of Hill Road. And we had identified this as a potential area as the master plan has currently been discussed. I believe that this site was indicated to be future land use of MDM, moderate dens, or MDR, moderate-density residential, which I believe allows four to 10 units per acre. And so we felt that we are very consistent with that, and we watched several of the discussions between the board and the planning commission and while the master plan was being produced, and just noticed some of the things, the goals and action items of the master plan, that I believe Redwood fills. The need for missing middle, you know, attainable housing, different rental properties and rental choices for folks, so that they can age in place or, you know, have, wait while their house is being built and have somewhere to live for a while. So I just wanted to point out a couple of the things that I thought were pertinent to our development with your new master plan. And then I think that's about it. We are coming back, obviously, for a public hearing, but I just thought I would give you a little bit of an introduction to our company and see what questions you might have. bit of an introduction to our company and see what questions you might have in advance of the public hearing, and we'll certainly bring more information about that at that time.
One question. What's the major north-south road that would be the closest to this property? I'm trying to figure where this is.
Center. That is A-Center.
Okay. I wasn't sure. I know Belsey's over here and Sagino's over here, I think. But I live closer.
This is a request for a rezoning from R-two to MDM?
Yes.
This is not based on a site plan. It's just a general.
We have discussed with Redwood to do a conditional rezoning going forward. That has been in discussion. That has not been fully decided yet, but when we bring that to the public hearing, if you see to set that today, then that will be decided for that.
Because I just want to point out that even though this has been shown, if we rezone from R-two to MDM, anything that fits that could go in there.
Correct. And if the.
They decide to back out, and somebody else says, hey, this property is already zoned. I wanna do this instead.
Correct. And I've been, been brought up to speed on some things that have happened here in the past, and we, and we've expressed those to the Redwood folks, and we were, the township recommends a conditional rezoning on this property.
And if I may speak, we are willing to offer some conditions to give the township some comfort level. We're still working on a list of those that we would offer to the township, but certainly, you know, pretty much that would only allow a Redwood neighborhood to be developed on the site if, if the conditional rezoning was granted. So I'm going to work with the planning staff on our offer and make sure that hopefully we've got some bases covered.
My understanding, we can't dictate what those are.
Correct.
Either say yes or no.
Yes, although, and I'm not a lawyer, but if there are areas of concern, you know, we can certainly listen to them and see if we want to incorporate them into our offer, I believe. So.
Ms. Coulter.
Yeah, I just wanted to point out, I mean, currently, the, a master plan that the Planning Commission developed and approved in December went up to the Township Board. It has not been approved by the Township Board yet. So at this point, you know, our future, the current future land use map still shows it as R-two. You know, so I just wanted to point that out. We had, you know, we did have a fair amount of discussion about changing that particular aspect of the future land use plan from R-two to, you know, multiple housing. And I still have some concerns about that. So I just wanted to make that point.
It may gain quite a bit of attention. Mr. Smith?
If you look at the, you don't have the full plan next to you, but to the west of this proposed property is a medium-density already.
Right.
So this would not be spot zoning if this was granted.
No.
So even if the master plan doesn't recommend for MDM at this site, we could still proceed.
Right. But on the east side, there's a, you know, a residential, single-family development.
Right. And has, we've, Emily and I and the planning staff have discussed that, and they, they're fully aware of conditions that may be required to help screen and/or.
Which body has final say? Does this, we make a recommendation?
For rezoning, yes. And then it goes up to the Township Board?
Okay. That's what I thought.
Thank you. Are there any other questions I can?
I have a comment.
Sure.
I've recently driven through the Redwood Development on Grand Lake Road.
Mm-hmm.
And it seems like a lot of the garage doors were open, and the garage has seemed to be filled with things. And the cars were parked in their driveways, and the driveways are fairly short. They could only accommodate two vehicles.
Mm-hmm.
I'm not certain, but does that indicate that those homes are built on a slab, or do they have basements? Or, and what would you propose for the new development?
So, if I may, to, I'm not sure if it's a discussion, but yes, they all are built on slab, slab on grade, no basements. Again, it's kind of the ADA FHA. However, you know, the garage can be storage space, certainly. I know a lot, I think we have, on average, one point five cars per unit. So I do think a lot of folks, you know, use their garage as storage space. So, you know, we do have walk-in closets, a pantry. We have storage space within the unit, but folks sometimes don't wanna get rid of all their stuff. But I do know that our driveways, we now, and I'm not sure if this is applicable for the other development, because I wasn't involved in the approvals of that, but we now make sure that behind any sidewalk, there's a room twenty-five foot, I believe, that would accommodate a full vehicle. So there's no overhang, which I'm not sure exactly is your question, but the driveways, we do try to accommodate, you know, if you had two cars in the garage, you could also put two cars in the driveway if you had guests or.
And do you allow on the street parking in that?
No. We, throughout our site plan, we will put guest parking spaces throughout with some accessible spaces, but we do enforce no parking on the streets. So.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, do you have a question or?
Oh, yeah. If, if we were to approve the rezoning tonight.
We're not, we're not approving rezoning.
I mean, make a motion.
No.
Are we, are gonna?
This would be to schedule a public hearing.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's all. We'll hear more details as to what they're offering and.
But let me just go on to.
Okay, sure.
Where I was headed. If, if we approve zoning after the public hearing, would it then be, because we talked about, you talked about conditions.
Mm-hmm.
When would those conditions be applied? Or would we request those conditions be stated before we would make a recommendation?
Yes. Okay. They would have to present the conditions for conditional rezoning at the time of.
Okay.
Thank you.
Before the public hearing?
Yes. Ms. Coulter?
Other question, kind of follow-up on Mr. Yansho's comment. Do any of your developments have basements or not?
We do have several that have basements, but really, those are only built due to significant topography. So, you know, if they're built into a hill, there's only a few. And typically, we do not build them unless we have to build them. So.
As I recall, and this was a long time ago, we had a discussion about the problem of developments that don't have basements because of, you know, tornado issues. Where do people go, you know, if there's no basement in a multi, you know, density development? What's your answer to that?
I don't know, but I will see if we have some information. I'll bring that back to you on June third to see if I can answer that question for you.
We are aware, we do have some developments in the township that are built on slabs that have integral storm shelters within the facility. For example, the, like, the bathroom may be built to a higher construction standard. It'd be normal. It's supposed to withstand hurricane or tornado. We don't see too many hurricanes.
Okay. I will, thank you for that, and thank you for the question. I will do my best to get an answer back for the next meeting, whether it be June third.
Oh, sure.
Yes.
Another question is a follow-up to what Mr. Yansho was talking about. Do your residents have a lot of children?
Well, we, we can't speak to any data just because of fair housing, and we don't track that. However, the nature of our development, they all only have two bedrooms and two bathrooms. So, you know, they, we find that they're most attractive to seniors, empty nesters, young professionals. We don't find there to be a large amount of children in the development. However, you know, we would rent to any applicant who qualifies, so there could be children. But we find that I think there's eleven maybe per one hundred for, in the school district or something like that on average. But again, that can change, and I, I just don't wanna cause any.
Well, just because kids are what generates a lot of stuff. That goes in the garage. And so, you know, if there aren't many, then that may help address the concern that my, Mr. Yansho's mentioned.
Yes. But certainly, you know.
Speaking from experience. You left the stuff behind, huh? Mr. Smith, are you recommending that this be put on the next month's agenda?
Please.
That is June third.
Do you want a motion?
Yeah, I was gonna say, in general, everybody seems to be okay with that. So, yeah, I think we can have a motion to.
So who?
Motion. Motion by Mr. Bush to put the public hearing for zoning case six sixty-one on the June third agenda. Support by Mr. Banderski?
Yes.
All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes six zero.
Thank you very much. We'll come back with some more information. Thank you.
Next item on our, on our agenda is, well, you know what I'm gonna do? Just wanted to fill in something here for those that aren't familiar with Mr. Bush. For those that aren't familiar with you, could you give me a two-minute, or give us a two-minute? You have been appointed since Mr. Brown, thank you, has stepped down. And you've got, you've got a history here.
Mr. Chairman, before he does that, before he does that, I'm requesting him to provide a written brief resume for distribution to the planning members, because we won't remember all that you state. So every member, every planning member has been requested to submit that, and most have. And if you just do that to Maria, she'll get it to the rest of us. And I'll ask Maria.
By the next meeting, is that sufficient?
Yeah. And I'll ask Maria to send to you copies of the ones that we have provided.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. So my background, I lived in Grand Lake my entire life, fifty, fifty good and poor. I started my, I guess, my community service as a Boy Scout when I was twelve years old, and did a lot of things in Grand Lake and the community. That developed into a ten-year stint as a volunteer department on the Grand Lake Fire Department, which turned into a six-year stint on the Planning Commission, which turned into a eight-year stint as an elected official. And that was nine years ago, and here I am again. So I'm back in the Planning Commission twenty-four years after I was first here.
Wow. Very good.
Back again.
Thanks. Good to see you again.
As related to that, Mr. Brown has stepped down, so he was our vice chair. So we need to elect a new vice chair. It sounds like you prefer that we do that tonight.
Yes, sir.
I don't know if there's anyone that would like to, I guess, first of all, volunteer. Mr. Banderski, are you interested in that role or?
Would I like that? Is that what you said? I'll stick with secretary.
You do a great job as secretary. You do. I don't know if there's anyone that's here that would like to nominate anyone that's here, or anyone that's not here might be a good way to do it, too.
That's why you don't miss meetings.
That's right. You don't miss meetings. Yeah, I was gonna say, Jay's not here.
Sarah's not.
Sarah, Sarah's the Township Trust. Well, she could still be, yeah, she could still be.
I would like to nominate Jay as one.
I would agree with that.
Teach him to be absent.
He's a friend of mine. I wanna, I wanna maintain that.
I don't know.
He must be the second.
You made the nomination. If no one else is doing it, I know, I've only been on here a month, two months. I'd be willing to do it. I understand the position.
Basically, whenever I decide I can't make a meeting, you take care of it. Yeah. That's pretty much it. That's kind of a summary of what it is.
Support.
I'm sorry. I didn't hear what you said, Mr. Bush.
I said I would nominate Larry.
Okay.
Support.
So we have nomination of Mr. Anderson to be vice chair by Mr. Bush, support by Mr. Yansho. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Thank you for stepping up.
Mr. Chairman, could I just ask a question? I'm not sure who to direct it to, but I know when Mr. Johnson, you know, sort of resigned from the Planning Commission after many years of service, the Township Board had a special recognition for him at one of their Township Board meetings. And I would hope that they would do the same for Mr. Brown because.
I'm glad you brought that up, yeah.
Extensive and very distinguished record of service.
Absolutely.
I'm gonna miss him, I know. I mean, he's been, he was on the board when I came, on the Planning Commission when I came on, and that was at least ten years ago, so.
Very good. Thanks.
Supervisor Bennett, and with help with Ms. Brown, they're gonna try and, once things open back up.
Right.
They wanna do, anyone will allow twenty-five people, and we know that probably more than twenty-five people would wanna, you know, celebrate his accomplishments here. So.
Thank you.
Yep.
Good.
All right. I think that takes us to the next item on our agenda, committee reports. First one would be Township Board. Sarah Hugo is not present. Next would be planning and zoning. Jeremy, you have anything else for us?
Um, no, not this time.
Anything from zoning board of appeals? I don't know if Mr. Bush has had a chance to attend any meetings and.
Just one.
Yep.
I did attend the twenty-seventh of April, and the discussion was just completed.
That was. Then from a site plan review standpoint, I, I don't think we've seen anything in the last month. The last one was the, on South Fenton Road, the pediatric dentist. We saw that for final site plan. That was approved, and that's moving forward. So it's, I think, been more than a month or so, but anything else coming up that we're gonna see in, soon in the works or?
Had a lot of meetings lately. Nobody's really.
Nothing shook loose yet.
Nothing shook loose yet, but we've got a lot of interest, commercial and residential. So it'll be, the summer's gonna be an exciting time.
Well, I've got eight twenty-nine PM. If someone wants to make a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we adjourn the meeting at eight twenty-nine PM.
Mr. Banderski made a motion to adjourn, support by Mr. Bush. I'm sorry, Mr. Anderson. I couldn't hear who it was from. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed can stay here, but the rest of us are leaving.
Larry?
Six zero.
Larry, I need your signature. Jill, I need your.